I call the Planning Commission meeting for June 13th, 2024 to order. We'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Rosetti?
Excused.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. Crocker?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, May 23rd.
So move.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Epstein.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. On tonight's agenda, we have two public hearings, and we will follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so, or some people may just have questions, and we will try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow an automobile repair shop at 8677 Twin Brook Road. Is that applicant here?
Yes.
Please come up, give us your name and address, tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
My name's John Scalish, and it's, um, the address is 8677 Twin Brook Road. We do mechanical repairs, and we rebuild older trucks and cars. We're not going to do any paint work there or anything like that, but the addition's going to be to, part of it's going to be to work out of, and part of it's going to be to store the vehicles that we're repairing, so I don't have to keep them outside.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Mr. Chairman, I just note, we have four conditions recommended for the, for the actual conditional use permit, and they have proposed 34 parking spaces, which includes the existing parking spaces. It is slightly below the requirements for vehicle repair, but based on the description and the single use of the facility, the administration is comfortable with the number of spaces proposed as is.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve for the conditional use permit with the four conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, and we'll stick around, we'll, we'll do the site plan here in a little bit.
All right.
Okay, before we get into the, to the, actually, conditional use permit to allow a reduction of the required buffer adjacent to the RMH Mobile Home and RVG Village Green Districts at 7144 Mentor Avenue. We received a lot of emails on this one, and I think there's a little confusion on what this conditional use is actually all about, so before we get started, I'd like Ms. Cantanzariti to give her a little explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what is under consideration this evening is a reduction in the proposed, the landscape buffer, which is a requirement under, under the Planning and Zoning Code. Just for clarification purposes, the property is zoned B2 general business. It has been zoned business since the property was a township in 1955. So the zoning of this particular parcel has not changed. Some of the surrounding zoning has, obviously with the addition of the Mobile Home Park, and then in 2016, the property to the west of, of the parcel was rezoned initially, as, as Mr. Rashad is showing here on the map, the front of the parcel of the RVG, what is now RVG, was actually zoned B2 as well, but then when they came forward with the proposal for the RVG, the R2 and the B2 was changed, in fact, to all of RVG, which abuts the business zone. So I just wanted to clarify that also, the proposed use of the property is retail. Retail, traditional retail, is a, a use permitted by right in the, in the B2 general business district, so this is not a consideration of the use tonight, this is only a consideration of the buffer requirements, and I would ask the law director to expound upon what those requirements entail.
Mr. Zeeman?
Yes, thank you. To obtain the conditional use permit to reduce the buffer, the commission needs to be guided by the general purposes and intents of the code, so Chapter 1162 of the Codified Ordinances does establish landscaping and buffering requirements, and it's those standards for this buffer requirement, the commercial and the adjacent residential uses. So we look at 1162.01 for the commission's guidance relative to its deliberations on the request, noting that it's the intent of the chapter, and I'm just quoting from the code a little bit, "to establish minimum standards for preservation, installation, and maintenance of landscaping within all districts, and in order to provide for orderly, safe, and environmentally sound development and redevelopment of land located within the corporate limits." The code mentions that landscape and vegetation greatly enhance visual appearance of the community, stabilize enhanced property values, and have beneficial impacts to the community's overall quality of life. And so, screening and buffering of incompatible land uses through the use of plantings, fencing, masonry walls, and earth and mounds, in order to minimize the harmful impacts of noise, dust, motor vehicle headlight glare, and artificial light intrusion on adjacent, adjacent lands, and there's some other additional requirements, but those are sort of the most pertinent to the question of why have a buffer to begin with, why does the code require it with these adjacent land uses, and again, those are the overriding policy considerations. And so the question before the commission is, can any of those policy considerations still be met, and the request, you know, consistent with the request, which I think certainly along the side property lines, is about 75% reduction in the required depth of it going from 20 to, to five feet. So those are the broad considerations, obviously then, the, the Planning Commission is guided by the general requirements for issuance of a conditional use permit, which include whether the character of the neighborhood may be altered, would it be, would the request be detrimental to public welfare and jurisprudence, whether or not it's in accord with the purpose and intent of the chapter and the comprehensive plan, and whether it complies with any adopted policies related to the uses, and again, that's what I just referenced in terms of the, the broad, overall purposes of the buffer requirements. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Zeeman. So is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, tell us a little bit about what you want to do, and we're just going to do the, just the conditional use.
Okay.
Okay.
My name's Charles Andrews. I'm here as a member of 7144 Mentor Avenue, Mentor, Ohio, 44060. For the conditional use, we provided the site plan that shows the, after meeting with the administration, shows the vegetation in the front, the fence in the back, the mound on the south side. The purpose for the conditional use permit is, in order to meet the economics of the project, the building size has to be such that we need to look at reducing the side buffers. What we have done to overcome some of the concerns with interfering with the neighboring properties is beginning, where the building starts, there's an eight-foot fence running to the back of the property, and then the back of the property is a mound, significant sized mound, 10 feet, with what we propose is vegetation, evergreens, et cetera, on top of the mound. There were some notes we were given ahead of the meeting that suggested, we had proposed in the front vegetation to be rose, rose of Sharon bushes, as opposed to like an evergreen. The recommendation is, from the administration, is for the evergreens. The reason we want the roses of Sharon is the limited liability company would prefer flowers, would prefer color, would prefer a more dynamic vegetation than a traditional evergreen. Also, the, where the vegetation starts on either side, the adjacent property on either side is empty. The, where the fence starts is where the residential property on either side, and then obviously the mound in the back would protect the south side residents from the interference that was mentioned. Other than that, some of the items, the, well, some of the items, I guess, will be for the site plan review, because basically, we're just focusing right now on the conditional use. So with that, I have nothing else.
Thank you. And is anybody here wishing to speak for this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? I suppose you all live in the subdevelopment. Do you have, like, a spokesman that, okay, or, or you can all come up, or do whatever you want to do. So if you want to come up, if you could just sit down for a little bit, come up, give us your name and address, and...
Good evening. My name is Mark Guanera. My fiancee Brittany and I...
I'm going to need you to spell that name.
So first name, M-A-R-K, last name, G-U-A-R-N-E-R-A, and I reside at 8267 Brody Boulevard, Mentor, Ohio, 44060, within the Ridgewood Greens community. So after carefully reviewing the proposal to reduce the buffer between our property lines and the 7144 Mentor Avenue property, we're here tonight to reject the conditional use permit that would allow the reduction of the required buffer between the two properties. We do not agree and wholeheartedly disapprove of this suggested reduction to the required buffer proposal. The reduced buffer to five feet would significantly overwhelm and absolutely encroach on the community's privacy. For example, our backyard space runs 48 feet from the back foundation of the community, of the residence, to the back property line, excuse me. The proposed reduced buffer zone would bring this 15,000-plus square foot, nine-unit multi-tenant retail site plan within 20 feet or less of our residence's property line and private backyard living space. This would invade on the neighborhood's privacy, it would add an unwanted direct line of sight to this 130-space parking lot, the dumpsters at each corner of the rear of the parking lot, traffic, both vehicular and pedestrian, noise, commercial, retail lighting, along with a view of an unwanted building. And, you know, not to mention a building that's possibly significantly taller than the homes themselves, not to mention the construction, so a five-foot buffer would not adequately provide a buffer that the neighborhood requires. So furthermore, the installation of a proposed eight-foot fence would not provide any privacy considering the large scale of the project in comparison to the homes established. Both properties would have a direct line of sight to each other. Our primary bedroom and bathrooms, for example, their windows are at the rear of the residential homes, and they're 20 feet above the foundation of the home, which overlook 200 feet or more beyond the property line and the entire 7144 Mentor Avenue property. As Mr. Zizman noted earlier, those, what he referenced was Section 5 of Page 10, "For the City of Mentor's Guide to the Municipal Planning Commission Site Plan Review Process", the conditional use, I mean, he stated, I think, three, four, or five of the six noted on Page 10, Section 5. But most importantly, I'd like to add a seventh point here. There is no legitimate geographical or topographical reasoning provided by the buyer slash builder of this proposed site plan outlining the uniqueness of the 7144 Mentor Avenue property to justify a 75% reduction to the buffer zone, taking it to five feet. What is specifically and legitimately unique about the property at 7144 Mentor Avenue that would justify this proposal to reduce the buffer zone? Nothing. In the builder's letter to the members of the planning commission, "They request conditional use permits to reduce the buffer of our residential homes by 75%. The reasoning provided is that the side yard setback and the landscaping presently prevents the economic feasibility of their project. As current taxpaying homeowners of the City of Mentor, this proposal is in direct conflict with the economic feasibility of our properties and home values. The proposed reduced buffer in-site plan would be just another one of Mentor's countless shopping plazas." I think we all know this, but not to mention the empty Great Lake Mall, nearly abandoned, the abandoned Giant Eagle, less than a mile from the site. And, you know, many of the aforementioned retail shopping plazas are losing tenants and are blighted, so I'd like, also like to highlight the fact that the developer has current vacancies in other shopping plazas in Mentor. Another small neighborhood strip center is just simply unnecessary and unwanted. As a newly built community, we do not want another building with a revolving door of tenants bordering our backyards. So in closing, this proposed buffer reduction in-site plan will absolutely and significantly affect the property and home value for current and future homeowners of Ridgewood Greens. As a, I mean, as taxpaying residents within the City of Mentor, we implore you to take our position seriously. I request that my remarks be added to the record, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Please give us your name and address, and...
Yes. My full name is Albert Mittelnussell J. Barnaby. I live at 7204 Cody Court in Mentor, but I'm here, I'm the president of the board of the Ridgewood Greens Homeowners Association, so I'm here on behalf of the board and of all the homeowners who pay dues monthly to the association. Ridgewood Greens Development is a newer development, it's been around four years, has 115 homes in the City of Mentor and seven homes in the City of Willoughby. Many of those, as you mentioned, many of those homeowners have contacted Jocelyn, I believe, and with either emails or letters expressing their concerns. But I'm here to list the concerns of the board of directors of the association. The reduced landscape buffer area to five feet, we feel is unacceptable. The association wants to maintain the buffer area as per City of Mentor guidelines under Section 1162 point, 1162 of the, that chapter, of landscaping, screening, and buffering. The eight-foot tall vinyl fence along the east and west property lines, we feel is inadequate. We would like to propose the following: a four- or higher-foot mound, similar to what's on the south side of the property, around the east, west, and south property lines, and then install the eight-foot vinyl fence atop of that mound. And then, in addition to the, the fence and the mound, we would like to see a sufficient number of tall evergreen trees to provide adequate year-round vertical screening. Another concern that we have is the placement of the garbage cans. If you look at the map, they're in the back corners of the property, of the 7144 property, but they really abut right up on both sides. I'm not here to represent the Mobile Home, but it also affects them, but the, the property, or the garbage disposal on the southwest corner of the, of the applicant's property abuts right up against backyards of neighboring, neighbors in our development. So we'd like to see those moved, where they, where they're moved is, you know, we can't say, but we would like them moved away from the property lines. The association is also concerned with the placement of the commercial building. It's set pretty far back from Mentor Avenue. Would like to at least have the planning commission consider having it moved somewhat forward towards Mentor Avenue. That would help, I think, with the buffering and screening requirements. We also have a concern of stormwater drainage. So in addition to what the city's stormwater requirements are, the association is recommending the use of permeable pavement. I noticed in the application that the outdoor lighting analysis has not been completed. The, the association would like to have a seat at the table regarding those requirements, especially regarding the height of the light poles. And there are numerous tall, very old, established trees, and I know that some of them are going to have to come down, we realize that, but to the extent possible, if some of those trees remain in the 20-foot buffer area, we would like to see those trees preserved. The association is willing to sit down with the developer and the municipal planning commission to resolve these issues and concerns, and I have a written copy of my comments, I'd like to submit that for the record as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Please give us your name and address.
My name is Ray, last name Nimsura, and I will spell that, it's N-I-E-M-C-Z-U-R-A. My wife Nikki is here in the audience as well. We live at 8266 Brody Boulevard, that's sub lot 1. It's directly across the street from the first house in on the, the developing side of, of our development. Much of what I plan to say has already been covered, but, so there'll be a little bit of repetition here, but I'd like to start with saying that, listening to the law director's commentary, the intent of the buffer zone is to make the new developments aesthetic appealing and provide buffer to the neighbors. And what I would suggest, based on what I've read and what I've seen in the diagram here, is that this plan does exactly the opposite. Where the property line of the new development is closest to residential buildings is where the, the buffer is the smallest. It, it's only five feet wide, proposed. The vinyl fence will take up at least a foot of that, you got four feet left, there's not even a chance of planting anything evergreen there, or anything tall enough where you would actually get some visual obstruction between the two properties. So what, what I would suggest is that the original buffer be maintained, so that they have the opportunity, if they want to put the fence up, fine, but I think there needs to be some evergreen plantings that will have some height to obstruct the view to the, between the buildings, and also to cover the fact that the light poles are probably going to be 20, 25 feet tall, whatever it may be, whatever the requirements are, which is way higher than an eight-foot fence. So whatever parking lot lighting goes on there, for security purposes, that's going to be shining right into those upstairs windows that Mark was talking about a moment ago. I do share the concern about the placement of the dumpsters. It's bad on the Mobile Home site, it's really bad on Ridgewood Greens site. If you look at, at the diagram where that placement, as I understand, it's easy for the guy to back his truck in there, but I'll also note that the difference between the smelly dumpster and the backyard of sub lot, I think it's 53, you know, which is vertically downwards from the diagram, there is like 20 feet from their, their living area in the, in their own yard. I think it's a very poor placement, and it should definitely be reconsidered. I do share Jay's concern about stormwater handling. When Ridgewood Greens was developed, the planning commission presumably required four retention ponds within Ridgewood Greens. Granted, it's a bigger area, and I understand that there's not as much here to drain, but it is all paved or building, so all, virtually all the rain that comes down has to go somewhere. I don't see any indication of where it goes, nor do I see any indication of any kind of retention pond requirement on this property. That's a concern. The drawings that I've looked at indicate to me that the driveways for this proposed development are going to go along the very edges of the property. Logistically, I get it, but the concern there is that I also see on the very top of this diagram a reference to a drive-thru. And if it turns out that this is a drive-thru restaurant, there is going to be constant traffic very close to these properties with essentially no buffer on that area between sub lots 53, 54, and 55. So I guess, in summary, I, I strongly oppose the reduction, the acceptance of this variation request, because where we need it the most is where the, the buffer is the smallest. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Hi there. My name's Derek Shea, S-H-E-A. I live at 8263 Brody Boulevard, I'm lot 55, so I share 100% of this buffer with, with this proposal here, too. And again, I support all the comments of my neighbors, I won't rehash those, I think they make really good points. I wanted to give one specific concern. I have a four-year-old son. Mark mentioned we don't have very big yards, so I had to buy a smaller, the smallest playground I could to even fit on my property, so with, with, you know, real-life concern, day-to-day concern. He'll be playing in his sandbox, swinging on his swing, chasing lightning bugs, and just a couple feet away will be potential traffic, car traffic, pedestrian traffic, and I know, last week, you guys had a good conversation over smoking lines in the amphitheater and secondhand smoking, so, you know, safety, a real-life safety risk for me is secondhand smoke just being a couple feet away, someone taking a smoke break behind their, their workplace, or someone in their car having a cigarette, which is their right, reducing that buffer would be a direct concern, my four-year-old son playing in the backyard there, so just want to bring that, that specific example to the committee. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, I wanted to check...
Sure.
...this into the record here, too. This is Mark's and mine's proposal that he read earlier. Thanks.
Is there anybody else? Please give us your name and address.
Can y'all hear me? Okay. My name is Shakana Johnson Ponder, C-H-A-C-O-N-N-A, Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N-d-P-O-N-D-E-R. And I'm here to represent myself and my husband, who is, he's on his way from work, but he may or may not get here in time. So I'm just going to read the, the letter that I sent to Jacqueline Garrett, because I think it expresses everything, and then first, I would like to show... So this is their property line right here, in the white. That's their property line.
Larry, could you? We have some technology here, he can throw that up on the...
Good.
Yeah, sure.
Great, that's even better. Because I got more.
Let's give him one second.
I just want to let you all know where my house is. So the white is their property, can you turn it upside down, please? And my, Brody Boulevard is that road right there, and that corner of their property, that bottom right-hand corner, is my backyard, and this affects me directly, because unlike the other residents that are there, yep, that house right there, unlike the other residents that are there, they have straight backyards. Mine's, it's not straight across, it's an indentation, so that directly affects me more than anybody else, in my opinion. I'm going to give you these two. Show the first one that's on top, please. Go, turn, turn it, turn it, turn it, yes. So they have a tree that's in the left side of the backyard, and their tree is one border. Mark is actually to the left of me. And the backyard where I'm starting to plant those evergreen trees, that is the back property line. And you can show them the next photo. And the red part is where they're trying to, I guess, go an extra 15 feet in, which is kind of in my backyard. And my backyard is the one that is hashtag, hash-marked, that area there. And so, actually, they have markers there right now, and that marker is closer to my house than that tree is, on that right-hand corner, the red part. So, just to, I'm going, I'm going to repeat some of the stuff they said, because I feel like it's needed, because we all work in numbers, right? So this is an official quest, request to reject the conditional use permit to allow the reduction of the required buffer adjacent to the, our homes, and I want to say that reducing the buffer zone will directly impact our family, you know, my home, as the property line abuts our backyard. Installing a five-foot fence, or I think it's eight now, I'm hearing it's eight, eight-foot fence from our property line will be intrusive and conspicuous, just because it's visually not aesthetic compared to, can you show the, clear, the, on my, one of my pages there, the one without, without the markings? So before we moved here, we looked at the, that line... So before we moved here, we looked at that line there, and it's very aesthetically pleasing to me. It's one of the reasons why we bought the home. And so I think putting buildings back there, and I mean, we can't help that, but just bringing it closer to our home, I don't think is necessary. We should, okay, I said that already. So we consider the greenery, vegetation, and foliage surrounding our plot as a positive factor. We also believe that this project was a residential area. Like, me and my husband thought this, it was a home there, so we thought that was another residence, that would be consistent with the surrounding residential zones. And it's unfortunate enough that we have to deal with the incoming noise and environmental pollution from vehicles, loading vehicles, because, you know, as they back up, they beep extra noises. So this is after the building is built, and they have trucks and stuff coming in and out, they back up, we can hear these noises. I mean, we already hear the railroad, we hear the trains going by. I mean, this on top of that is just adding to it. Dumpster trucks, you know, the filth and congestion. The proximity to the garbage dumpster is very close to, you can show the, their site. The one you had up, yeah. So that right, bottom right-hand corner, just next to those trees there, the garbage dumpster is right next to that. It's right near our backyard, and we already have issues with rodents. Like, I literally had a, what's it, groundhog, I think we had, groundhog that came into my backyard and went right directly against my house and dug a hole. It took us a very long time to get that thing out of there. We had to literally put our kitty litter in the hole, and then I got some wood that I had decorative in my house and put that in the hole to make him stop coming. I think the kitty litter worked. So I'm saying that to say that there's a lot of rodents in the backyard. We already have, I mean, it's nice to have our rabbits back there. We see our deer back there. We have a little skunk that me and my husband, we named Charlie. We see him on the video all the time. So we call him Charlie, and we have our dog that we tell not to go near Charlie because we don't want any issues. So, you know, it's a lot of rodents back there in addition to that. So, you know, I think bringing the trash cans right there on that side of the property right behind my house will increase the property of these rodents coming through our homes in addition to, I actually found a mouse. I don't know how he got in my house. One mouse that got into my house and was eating out of our cat bowls. So it seemed like to me a very bold mouse, but he got in our house, and our house is built in 2021, so it's very new. I don't even know how he got in there. So this, I think, would make that worse. I mean, the trash dumpster's right there. I don't know if there's going to be food in this place or cooking or anything that's going to attract these rodents, and it's literally in my backyard. In addition to odors, like if they have a restaurant or whatever, they have smoke, whatever coming out, I think that would affect us, too. Potential psychological issues for people like myself who could be a shift worker. I'm a nurse. I work at a cardiac ICU downtown at Cleveland Clinic. So I save lives. I need to be awake and alert. And so these noises that I'm talking about, I think that would affect our sleep cycles, and it would increase our stress. I mean, I don't have kids, but other people that have kids, you know, and they play in the backyard. So, you know, now it's an additional worry to have people or strangers looking directly into our homes. That building, or matter of fact, the trash dumpster would be directly across from my living room, to be honest, if I looked out the window. And my bedroom is on that side, my bathroom is on that side. So I think, I don't know what kind of tree they would have to plant that tall to not see my house, but, I mean, I don't know. I don't think that would be good. So the light pollution, as was mentioned before, with 24-hour streetlights, that is providing a lot of light and disturbance. You know, my bedroom is right there on that side, so. And so just the encroachment on the topography, like the removal of vegetation, alteration of natural areas, loss of habitat, and reduction of ecological processes. I mean, again, when I look out the window, I see the very aesthetically pleasing. This helps with my depression, okay? And I imagine it does with others. So I have depression, and my environment matters. I'm getting emotional because I moved from a place that was very bad. And being here, it just helps with my depression. It helps with looking at all of the greenery, as you see in my photo, in my backyard. I believe there's going to be changes in the water quality because of this uncontrolled sediment during the construction stage, and it will introduce higher toxic levels of trace metals and hydrocarbons in our water. This is just because of them building, I mean, they have to connect lines and hoses and connect to the main line, so it's just in addition to that. So that's one thing. Ventilation and sunlight, and then the unknown effect on residential property values. And I said, just take these factors into consideration because, okay, we're, we just want a little space. We have to deal with all of this stuff I just listed, and we were here for a while listening to me, right? All of that stuff, those things combined, and we're asking for an extra 15 feet that was required in our Menter's bylaws or whatever. So they want, we want our 20 feet to stay. Where is that? So take that into consideration for both our neighborhood and a commercial development site to maintain the current transition zone that will not destabilize the framework of our neighborhood. And this is Shakana Johnson Ponder and my husband Lloyd Ponder. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody? Please give us your name and address.
I am Dan Weiss. I live at 8245 Badeos Drive, B-E-D-A-O-S Drive. So I have a question, if that's okay, because I'm not informed on this stuff. Just the zoning that was done on that weird corner, was that the planning commission when Ridgewood was planned, or was that the zoning commission that did that weird corner allowed the, you know, the property line to be strange like that? Or was that? Yeah, that lower right corner that's just weird.
Do you want to know now?
Yeah.
Kathy, do you have that answer?
Would it have been the planning commission or the zoning commission?
A little in there, or Joe.
This parcel existed.
Right. But Badeos, or but Ridgewood was planned, and somehow someone allowed that strange zoning corner to occur, right?
It's when the development plan came in. I mean, it does occur on occasion when we have a development plan that's submitted, but you can see there, that was, well, that was an earlier plan. That wasn't the final, but it's just the way that the final plan was submitted and it was approved.
I just, I just wanted to know who would be responsible, zoning or planning or?
Well, there's just a planning commission.
Just planning, okay, sorry. Okay. So recognizing that, right? At some point, a strange change was made to allow a weird plot, right, for that, that I think this would be righting a weird wrong in a way for that, you know, that being done. And so I also would encourage rejecting this. In addition, I'm actually currently looking for a space to lease for a new business, and I can tell you, as one of our members said, there's plenty of property in Menter right now. And so I guess I just wonder, why do they need nine spaces? Why can't they do eight? And if they did eight, that would seem to me to make plenty of space. They would probably argue that's not economically feasible, but I would respectfully disagree. And it would allow for this to not be an issue. So that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Someone came in in favor of the project, but he got lost.
Okay. Sure. Okay. Please give us your name and address.
Frank DeMulta, 9195 Baldwin Road, Kirtland Hills. I was the owner of the golf course. I own the property that's currently there. Owned it for 35 years. I've had the property for sale for over four years. I literally had no one interested in the property. First reason why I wonder why no one was interested is because it just seems like it's in a very time-warped area next to a mobile home park, and it just doesn't get off the ground. That area, for the most part, just seems to be gotten forgotten of. And, you know, being the owner of the property and making the deal to have all these fine residents that are now living there.
You got, you got to, just to dress up here.
Oh, sorry.
You got to stay under the mic here.
I'm just saying, you know, I did the right thing by having, both cities having a nice development put in there, and it's always difficult for homeowners to be seeing change as being difficult, especially in their homes, and I got that. But on the other side of the coin, as an owner of the property, this is the only company here that's ever had an interest in putting something on the table. Now, what does a homeowner or landowner do when you had nothing going on? I don't know. You know, a lot of people want to have their peace, and they want to have quiet and want tranquility. I got that. If this gets shot down, what does it leave me to do? It leaves me to look at other options that may not be very, you know, what they don't like might get worse because maybe somehow or another we find somebody that wants to put a bar in over there, you know, or make a small, I mean, you can't stop if we go ahead and follow the rule on what needs to be put there legally. I just want to be able to have some happy medium and, or hey, if the homeowners, and I know it's tough, but they want to make a park out, they want to buy, you know, they can beautifully have a nice park there. I think these guys are going to do a great job, and I'm sure they'll be able to work with the city. I worked with the city for probably 40 years with deals that I've done in the City of Menter, and, you know, I just think that there's ways of getting through things, but I'm sorry that if there's a mouse that gets on your property, I really am, because you really, you know, those are really, you know, what are you going to do with a mouse? But the fact of the matter is, I understand their concerns, but think about what I have to deal with. And no one's helping me try to market the property. I've had it for four, maybe five years for sale, and nothing. And, you know, what I'm going to do next, you know, I'm hoping this works. What happens next, it may not be what they all want. I'll find something that might not be the most suitable building or business on that property. I'm not making that as a threat. I don't know what could happen there. I like to be able to have it worked out, but just think about my end, you know? I'm an owner, and I got nothing going on there. And there's nobody in the city politically that's ever tried to think about helping out what can they do in that area, because it's never moved. And I'm not a bad guy. I just want to be able to make sure that I can walk away. My partner passed away two and a half years ago, so the estate has his half, and I'm partners with that. So, you know, they want to get moved on, too, you know? And so I hope that you guys consider what is going on there and how to be able to make it work out. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Oh, you got, come on up to the mic. Give us your name and address. What do you teach?
Math, high school math. Carrie Barnaby, 7204 Cody Court. My question is just how many times, because again, we all bought our property, and we're on Cody Court, so we're not directly affected by this. We have the retention ponds behind us, but everybody bought knowing there was this 20-foot buffer, so I'm just curious, how many times has the city amended it and allowed a business owner to say, we are going to give up 75% of that when the homeowners have already bought? Does anybody know the answer?
I don't. Mr. Zeeman, any?
I've been around for 20 years, and I could not possibly speculate. Very frequently, the discussion is about increasing the buffer, and increasing the buffer may be occasioned by uses and facilities that are not permitted as of right, such as a drive-through facility, a bar, things of that nature. So the discussions can go both ways. Occasionally, reduction in the buffer is something warranted by unusual circumstances, or there's the adjacent property can't be developed in any way, and so there's a million variables. It's really a case-specific, and so it's really, it would be impossible to come up with any sort of general pattern as to reductions or increases in buffers for that matter.
Thank you.
And my only other question is, I happen to be married to the president of the HOA, so I hear different things, but we were just a bit surprised that the HOA, I mean, had we not, Mark forwarded the email to my husband to let him know. So the fact that the HOA, which actually owned, am I correct, a tiny piece of that, was never notified, is a bit concerning to us. And then, just so you know, we did call our councilman, and he told us he hadn't been given any information about it. So we're just a little bit surprised as HOA that we didn't know that it was going to be presented today. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
We have four conditions noted. If anybody has any questions, happy to answer.
A few of the topics that were brought up were drive-through, stormwater detention, outdoor lighting, trees, and dumpster location. Could you touch on any of that at all? I know we're kind of getting out of the buffer, but those were issues that were brought up, and if you could touch base on any of those.
Well, and this is in the preliminary plan phase, so detention would come with the final development plan submittal. There's many ways to do detention. It could be underground detention. It just depends, it's because it's in preliminary, and that's the, under the purview of the engineering department. I can't really speak anymore to that, but there's more to be seen with that. They would have to meet any requirements for storm detention for the site. With regard to lighting, we do have lighting requirements. They would have to submit an official lighting plan. We have a set of standards that they have to meet for the lighting. The pole height cannot exceed the height of the building, so that's one issue. All of the lights have to be fully shielded, full-shielded cutoff, so they can't be upward lighting in any way. That's another issue. The location of the dumpsters is always a topic of conversation. You know, and it can be certainly, you know, an item that can be visited by the planning commission in terms of another location. Obviously, you want to have access. You don't want to have any impacts to adjoining properties. But, you know, in the back of the property is where they are most commonly seen, so it's not unusual to have them where they're proposed, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't be up against the building and have the parking moved a little bit further. There's different ways to get around that, but dumpsters, lighting.
Drive-through and trees.
So the drive-through and the patios that are shown are just conceptual at this point. They would have to come back and actually submit conditional use permits, applications for consideration. They did that specifically because they wanted you to take into consideration what that layout would look like, and again, having that to take into account with the preliminary site plan, but that is not on the table at the moment. That would have to be submitted, and they are opting to allow the tenants to do that if and when they decide they need those. And trees, well...
Existing trees.
A full landscape plan would have to be submitted. We have a landscape architect that is a member of the staff who always reviews all of the landscape plans. We still stand by the position that the rose of Sharon isn't the most appropriate tree for the buffer and for a long age property line, just because it's not a year-round, doesn't provide a year-round vertical screen. There's many different alternatives that could be considered. And again, that is subject to further review with a landscape plan. Any trees that are removed, we certainly never encourage healthy trees to be removed. We always ask that they identify any trees that are going to be removed, if they're obviously ash trees or unhealthy trees, trees that just don't grow well, or if it's just a bunch of brush and debris, then by all means, yes, get rid of it. But that would be subject to landscape plan review. So lots of stuff that's in the preliminary stage. This is early on, and it would still be subject to further review and more definitive technical plans at the final site plan stage.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga. Mr. Varga.
It's not, could, could we speak, yes? It sounds like, I mean, if I'm listening to everything that's being said, it sounds like the only reason that we're really dealing with this buffer reduction is an economic consideration.
Yes. Well, it's not only, it's, it's a significant factor. In order for the, in order for this project to come off the ground, there has to be a specific amount of square footage. And in order to get that square footage, we have to request a conditional use permit for the, for the side buffers. And, you know, a lot of this stuff kind of went beyond that initial kind of plan that I thought we were going to begin the discussion of is ju, we're, we're just discussing at this moment the conditional use permit for the side buffers. And in the back, if you look on the site plan where the garbage cans are, that, I, I believe that comes up to, on the side there, 20 feet. So it, it's not the whole length of the property that we're looking for a conditional use permit for. It's just for the part where the, the five, the five-foot buffer zone is created. So, for example, the, the dumpster location is, is within the, the required buffer zone on the, the side setbacks. And we're not requesting anything in the back, but we'd be happy to move the, the dumpsters. We don't want, we don't want issues with odors, vermin, et cetera. We, so that, you know, we're, we're negotiable to move the, move the dumpsters, but that's really not an issue with regards to the CUP.
Well, with, as you described, then, this is the square footage of the building development that you need.
Yeah, 15,360.
Is this the only orientation to that square footage that, that you, you came up with in terms of this piece of property?
That is the highest and best use with respects to the, the size, the placement on the property, the considerations for parking. If you go up too close, then you end up in issues, you know, outdated parking where you have not enough parking in the front. Rear parking doesn't necessarily work for retail locations. The best retailers, which for this type of building is going to require high-end, high-paying, you know, high-paying rent tenants. So we have to, in order to get this off the ground, have to present a modern style, a modern look and a modern size in order to meet the economics of the deal.
I, I hear what you're saying. I, I'm, I can think of a couple other orientations of the building that may not be as suitable for your purposes, but would, would at least deal with the allowable buildable area of the site.
Yeah, that, and we, we took that under full consideration, but with the way the layout is, you're going to sacrifice the modern uses for retail shopping centers with the appropriate amounts of rows of parking, the appropriate amount of sidewalk, the appropriate amount of depth. And in order to get this project, which is a significant cost in construction, these days, construction costs are through the roofs, the, there has to be a certain amount of tenants paying, there has to be a certain amount of rent getting collected for the size square footage. And that's why this footprint, and we've gone through with civil engineer, we've gone through with our architect, and we've determined that this is the absolute, this is actually the smallest size we can work with. And in order to do that, we need to request a, a conditional use permit for the side buffers, but not all, you know, only for a portion of each side.
Has this building been built someplace else, developed someplace else before, in a different location?
You mean, has this footprint been, no.
Yes.
No.
Okay, I, I.
No, we, I mean, it, it's not, you know, yes, to answer your question generically, this shape has been built.
Well, no, I just meant made by these developers or?
These developers are modeling this design in part, I mean, you know, every property's unique unto of itself, you know, obviously, it's the nature of real estate. But there was a project across from UH Hospital in Willoughby where Crumble Cookie is, First Watch, et cetera. It's a, it's a brand-new building. And it's, it's similar. That building is a little higher because of the depth going down towards the lake. It's on the, on the opposite side of the road, so it, it wouldn't be similar in terms of height, but it's a similar in terms of stature, in terms of quality. It's, this is the type of building that the developer's looking to create.
I understand. I, I mean, you mentioned the highest and best use of the property. I, I completely understand that concept, but that's usually within the restrictions that the property presents itself with. And then within, within those restrictions, it's the highest and best use.
Correct. Within the conditional use permit we're requesting is the only way that we can make this project work with the, the size square footage that is required in order for the economics of the deal to work.
So just in, just in conclusion from my point of view, this whole issue, at least from your end, is based on an economic viability issue?
Yeah. Yeah, there was no, no denying that.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, just so that's clear. I mean, it's not, it's not based on some kind of unique site condition, it's not based on some kind of.
Well, it's a unique site condition in that the, the, in order to get a project like this, it has to be of a certain size in order for the economics to work. There's a lot of components that go into the economics. It's not just, this is how much, it, it, it's not just a matter of revenue. There's huge construction costs, this is multimillion-dollar, you know, construction deal, there's a lot of planning, there's a ton of cost that goes involved in planning. There's obviously bank rates where they're at. And additionally, the market is, you know, it's, it's not the hottest that it's been. So there's a lot that goes into leasing.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman, a question for the applicant as well. There was some mention about retention basins, permeable pavers and so forth. Has any of that come into play? I, I know your, your talk just pre, previous to this was the square footage of the building itself and the tenants, which I think if, if there is a requirement for retention basins, for example, that's going to affect building placement possibly, building size, also parking counts. Can you speak a little bit of to that?
I, I can. I guess this would be bleeding into a different topic besides the CUP. But with regards to the water retention, either, you know, whatever options are available, if there's a, an option above ground and an option below ground and, and determining, you know, what the city will approve and, and what the city won't approve, you know, whatever op, if there's one option available, then that's all that's available. If there's two options, but this, the developer's not looking for any sort of conditional use permit. The, the developer will submit with the final site plan approval that follows the recommendations of the city.
Just questioning, because it almost seems like the cart's before the horse a little bit on, I, I realize this is preliminary, but all of those things kind of factor in, so, thank you.
Yeah, it, it does factor in, but there's, there's nothing that's been indicated to us by civil engineers or our architect that indicates that there's any sort of problem with retention, that it's going to minimize anything or create some sort of hindrance that would make this building footprint not viable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Brad.
Yeah, I'm struggling with this reduction in the buffer zone. Because of what was just mentioned, you know, it seems like you have the cart before the horse here, because the detention's a major factor here. And if you have to go underground, that's pretty expensive, whereas you can reduce that buffer, maybe use that for your detention area. But as it says, I'd like to see some different plans if you have them, but it sounds like you've gone through those already.
Yeah, there is no other option. This is the only option that's available for this site to work with this developer's plans.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Well, from my point of view, I know we don't have a room full of people from the mobile home side, but I have the same problem with that side as I do with the people of Ridgewood Greens. Although they're not here tonight, they're still represented by this board. And it looks like the building is too big for the parcel. That's just what it comes down to. And if this was a reduction of a buffer next to railroad tracks, an unbuildable parcel or, or another commercial property, I could see that there. But it's a hard pill to swallow to put this in someone's backyard. I just, if I always look at this, if this was my yard, the, the people that are here, they may not have known what that buffer was when they bought their house. They may not have known, but they trusted the City of Mennor, that we have these requirements in place. So, as far as I'm concerned, it just looks like your building is too big for the parcel.
Yeah, that's understandable. I mean, we're asking for a conditional use permit. We're not, we're asking the city to make an exception for this cir, set of circumstances. Now, if you have.
Even if you were able to meet the buffer, we would still be talking about mounding, we'd still be talking about trees.
Yeah.
We'd be talking about all these issues, even.
I mean, we wouldn't be talking because we wouldn't propose to build the center.
I got you.
This only works in this unique cir, set of circumstances. And maybe you're in favor of it, you know, maybe you're not. And, and we believe that this is a unique cer, set of circumstances, specifically as was discussed. This is not an area of frequent development. This is an area of very low development. I can't think of anything that's been developed recently in that neck of the woods.
145 houses.
We would like to bring to this area a retail strip center to service all the housing in the area. And yes, there has been some people that came here to speak in opposition, but there was also, I, I saw that there was many people who took time to write and in, in favor of this center that are residents of Mennor. And also, in the big scheme of things, a very small portion of the community came to speak in relation to the city as a whole. There's 45,000 people approximately here that didn't come to speak, that do trust the city, to make certain exceptions. That's why CUPs exist, and we believe that this exception fits that, that tune. And we would like to put a beautiful center up and service the community. And all the benefits that come to the community is a result of a shopping center of this stature.
Thank you. Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the four conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
No.
Mr. Varga?
No.
Mr. Crocker?
No.
Mr. Haddon?
No.
Mr. Perkovich?
No.
Mr. Cook?
No. Under new, so, under new business preliminary site plan of a commercial building at 7144 Mennor Avenue, that applicant here, could you come up real quick again? So, is there no other thing to propose or, so?
No, no.
You want to withdraw this then?
Yeah, we either get the CUP or, there's nothing else to discuss.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to withdraw.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. We have a building addition, site alteration at 8677 Twinbrook Road. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name, tell us a little bit about what, oh, yeah, that's, I'm sorry. It was so long ago.
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about the building.
Well, my addition I want to put on is, they have it at 9,000 square feet. But is that the outside dimension you guys go by? Because the inside dimension's only 8,450.
There's a grosser than that square footage.
I'm just asking, because that affects parking too. But we're going to use the addition to do some mechanical work out of. And it's split up into three units, the original one and two, two others that are attached. And we're going to use the one part for storage, the rear, like I said before, for cars and stuff that we're going to be working on, trucks. Trucks is mostly what we do, and it's all mostly older trucks. And we're going to be disassembling some and finding parts and, you know, rebuilding them. So I want to keep everything in the building. I don't want to have storage outside. So that's basically what we're doing there. And I had Frankie and Dylan's collision that was on Twinbrook, and I sold it to Gerber, and then I bought Buck Weiss's building, and I'm retired. This is just a play, basically.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Well, in, in response to his one comment about the building, the building plans will be submitted with the building permit review, and so the final floor plan and square footage will be ironed out at that time. I think if it's, you know, unless we were way off, but that's, it was based on what was submitted. Again, the layout is, is such, you can see the darker area in the back shows the additional parking. Certainly, the city always wants to see any kind of storage inside the building as opposed to outside, so we're happy that anything he's proposing is inside. So it is a substantial addition for the site. If you've ever driven by this particular property, it's actually a very nicely situated parcel. And so I guess the only recommendation, which we noted in the plans, was that the, the materials of the addition would match the existing.
Those are my plans to match the original building.
Yeah, it's a good-looking building.
Yes.
Anything from the commission members?
Just, Mr. Chairman, just if you're going to put any mechanical units on the roof, I know it's like a broken record with me, but I al, we always ask that any mechanical units, either on the roof or on the ground, need to be shielded in, in some architectural treatment.
That would be no problem.
That's all I have.
I don't plan on putting anything on the roof except shingles.
That's fine.
No holes in the roof.
Anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the five conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you. We have a site alteration, parking lot expansion at 8160 Norton Parkway. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Sure. My name is David Kornbluth. I can spell that. My home address is 3919 Beechmont Trail, B-E-E-C-H-M-O-N-T, Orange Village, 44122. So thank you for being here tonight and letting us present this request to you. This is for 8160 Norton Parkway, which is a new office building on Norton Parkway. Building was completed in late 2021. It's a three-story office building, about 31, 32,000 square feet. Currently, the building is occupied on the third floor by the Cello Levitt Law Firm. We ended up leasing the entire second floor to Burgess and Neiple, an engineering firm. And we have a lease signed with a regional health, actually, it's a Nash, a global healthcare provider for the entire first floor. They want to put in a sports rehab practice. And as part of that lease, they are requiring us to get the parking lot expanded. The intent for this building was always for it to be the third-floor general office and the first and second floor medical office. So in some ways, the parking is originally designed, was too small to accommodate all the medical office. So the first-floor tenant now wants us to expand the parking lot because they're going to have a little bit more traffic, which is why we are requesting the 64-unit expansions of the surface parking.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
There's sufficient parking proposed and certainly pleased with the permeable pavers proposed. We certainly, we don't see that very often and always a, a good element.
That's a great-looking building.
Thank you. We're really proud of it.
Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hadd.
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
For the expansion, is, is there going to be a way for the people to walk across? I mean, there's no cross.
I mean, there's no crosswalk.
We have not shown a crosswalk.
Is there any thoughts of putting one in somewhere? Or are they going to use the driveway to cross or...
I expect they'd use the driveway, but it would also be very easy for us to make a footpath and...
Just a question.
Paint it and yeah.
All right.
We can talk to Rich about that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Haddon. I'm sorry. Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Okay. I see you relocating those trees. That's a serious proposal.
Oh, yeah.
The ones that are, you're going to, you're going to put them around the existing site and the parking area, the islands?
Our landscaper and for sure, we're going to do a complete, we're going to relocate the trees.
Well, I mean, I appreciate that. That's, that's better than tearing them down.
I don't like even moving them, so it's...
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Varga, if you've been by the property lately, we've actually, this, this spring, put in a lot more landscaping, a lot more perennials, and really trying to make sure that the curb appeal...
I'm familiar with the building and what you've been doing. And it's, it is, I agree, it's an attractive-looking building.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the six conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Miscellaneous review to allow an outdoor propane sales exchange area at 8337 Mennor Avenue. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address. Tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Fennel, last name Patel. I'm representing behalf of my dad.
Could you spell that for the clerk, please?
F-E-N-I-L, last name Patel, P-A-T-E-L. We just turned this building into a convenience store recently. But I'm at a one-month anniversary for us. Okay. And we would like to add propane tanks for the sale. So, I see where it said the five feet away, any, from any door or opening. We see, so on the side, on this side of the, that, that window, while we get our walls up, the concrete walls up, we will get that concrete filling in. So, that will be, that, that doesn't lead to anything at the moment. But that's so far. So, we'd like to put a propane cage in there.
And you've read the conditions?
Yes, we did.
Kathy, anything from the administration?
Just a note about that opening. Our fire department did comment on that, and they were mainly concerned that it was a door. And as long as it's not a door, they were comfortable with that request, so...
Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
And especially, I was sensitive about the fact that you will be putting a bollards up to protect that cage from being hit by a car.
Yes, sir. So, there will be two six-feet concrete block walls along with the same color of the building. And there will be no ceiling on top, so it'll be open, air-ventilated. There will be a metal gate in the front, and it will be only operated by the sales representative or the managing member.
Okay. And that was just one of the conditions. Thank you.
Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with the 11 conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.